We are back in session. Thank you for a little longer than the 10-minute break. But, uh, thank you very much. And, uh, the items that we were talking about with toll business, it was speaking about the, um, grant, uh, from the Georgia Department of Transportation, um, for $299,095. Uh, 95 percent grant and 5 percent will be paid by the county airport authority. Is there any more discussion?
And again, just to leave out where I see it, we need to speak with this Mr. Swafford has been up there for a long time, so if we got questions about the grant, let's focus on that and share the justice.
Um, I still, I still go back to the May 27th meeting where you said we got the contract and got to use them, and we had to use the Michael Baker group. I support getting an EA because that's what needs to happen. In fact, how come the, how come they didn't require us to get the EA at the beginning? Now, I'm not saying the beginning of the Bible, I'm saying at the beginning of this process with the commercialization of the airport.
The FAA has a process called, uh, which refers as CADDX, kind of local exclusion, which is typically used for projects that are considered not to have a major environmental impact. So initially, the FAA had taken the approach on the, on the projects that we had, the taxiway widening and the, uh, and the taxiway extension and runway pre-strapping, that those were not significant impacts that required an environmental assessment. Ultimately, they agreed to do the EA, again, because of the lawsuit. It was a settlement. Um, they could have gone to court and fought it and potentially won, however, that would have been a long drawn-out, expensive process, so it didn't make a lot of sense to the FAA to go down that route.
Okay. But did they know we were doing commercialization?
They, they did. They, they had the certification paperwork in their office.
They knew we were doing?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And, and, the, this EA is far more comprehensive than what you actually asked them permission to do, because all we asked them permission to do was widen the runway, extend the taxiway, and, um, they had a fire station in there and had strapping, okay? And part of the only things that weren't covered were the extension of the taxiway, the fire station, and the lighting. They said that wasn't covered. Now, this grant covers anything you might ever do out there.
No, it covers anything that, that we have within our
Within your boundary, yes. Within the, when I say anything, it, it covers airport and county property. Doesn't cover the IBA property. It covers what's out there on the airport that you can buy.
That's correct, and it, and it covers what is foreseeable for the next five years, so what could happen in the next five years. That was the directive of the FAA, was to make sure we included anything and everything that, that we could need in the next five years, so that it would be a more comprehensive environmental assessment, and so that there wouldn't be a need to turn back around in a year, two, three years and do this process again.
How, how long, kind of refresh my memory, how long have we known we were going to have to do this with the lawsuit? I don't have my dates with me.
December?
Okay. Since December, what happened?
Yes, and that's when the settlement was reached, was in December.
Okay. I, I guess, I'll just say this, and then, um, I wish we had taken the time from December to do what we needed to do to get somebody else besides the group that everybody has disagreement with them doing. And I could support that, because I support doing an environmental assessment. I don't support it being done by this group. And I wouldn't have asked to table it the last meeting, had we had everything we needed to have, seen the contract, got the paperwork in time, decided the day before, and we could change this to somebody else besides the group that did it in 2005. And I feel like we're, bottom line is, I feel like we're putting ourselves in a position, I know that y'all say we're going to be sued no matter what, I think we're putting ourselves in a position where you can guarantee that, because that's, but that's been the number one thing that people have had disagreements with. And I think we could probably get this whole board and everybody in this room to agree, we need to do the environmental assessment, don't use the Michael Baker group, use somebody else, and we'll have this thing put, put over with. We've had time to do that since December, so.
Well, but, but now, there's nothing stopping the Board of Commissioners from requiring it. Now, whether it'll pass, I don't know, but you could make that motion, and that, that be done. Now, I don't know if it'll pass, but, but there's nothing stopping you or any one of the individuals from doing that. I mean, there's nothing, we're not bound by anything to not do that. I mean, we have before us a contract or a grant. We can either approve it, we can say we'll approve it under these conditions, but that's where we are, you know? It doesn't matter what we want is somebody to, you know, it, it's where we are, and where we are, if we got a grant, we can either approve it, amend it, or something, because it hasn't been submitted yet, right?
The grant hasn't been submitted?
Because it can't be submitted until we approve it.
That's correct. It's been submitted to us.
Yeah, yeah, we've been given, we gotta fill the paperwork out and send it in, so.
Hasn't been accepted.
And now, what happened in the past, what's going on in the future? And that's the contract, and, you know, we need to move forward and not worry about what happened in December, and what happened in May, and what happened whenever, but let's move on.
New business item.
Yeah, I want to make one comment, really follows from Mr. Graham's, recognizing that the airport authority had the authority to enter into some agreement, uh, for the EA. Because I, I think that the airport authority and the industrial building authority are such highly qualified individuals, and yet, you know, when you've got an Alan Shill that owns his own chemical company and travels to Europe and South America to oversee that, when you've got a Jim Underwood that's been one of the highest executives in the automobile area, um, you've got Kerry Tenmore, who is a FedEx pilot and Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force, um, and born and raised in Pollin County, loves Pollin County. The, really, the only person that does it come through the Board of Commissioners for approval and vote is the Chamber of Commerce. Everybody else, it, it falls through us. And, yeah, we're elected, the mayors are all elected. When people say that the airport authority or the IBA are not really representing us, I gotta question where that comes from. At all levels of government, county, state, federal, there are people with credentials are appointed. And, and I just don't know if you could find a better qualified group. Calvin Thompson, I know a lot of people think he's failing by his, they do about me, but he is a devout Christian man that owns his own business, did a lot of the grading for Wellstar Hospital, um, you know, I just don't understand why people don't think these people are, or people, don't just think that the people on these boards are, are as excellent as they come, you know?
Question, Blake. If you went to a different engineering firm, would the price go up with the paperwork and the studies that Michael Baker has currently? Will they use some of that information that they have?
Well, there's a couple of things to, to consider there is, you know, first, we'd have to go out with an RFP or an RFQ to try to select someone. Um, I have worked with probably most of the companies in the state of Georgia that do this type of work over the past 20 years. No one obviously has, has the background information that Michael Baker has, so would the cost go up? I'm speculating, but, but I have to say that it would, because someone would have to come in and they would have to go through a, a huge education curve and get all the background information, they would have to take a 2005 EA, they'd have to look, take a look at the supplemental EA that's in 2010, so it'd be a huge, huge learning curve for them to get up to where Michael Baker is today. So, yes, it certainly would, I can't give you a dollar figure.
Okay, thanks. So, the grant that we're receiving, not to exceed $299,095, is that figure comprised from the Michael Baker group, or is that figure comprised from the FAA?
The way these projects work is the consultant cements their, not their bill rate, but their hourly estimation of how many hours it will take each individual from each specific type, biologist, engineer, archaeologist, whatever, to complete the work. And that is approved initially, and then after that, number of man-hours is approved, and then they put dollar figures to it, and then that's approved as well.
And, and one of the reasons I ask is because Mr. Barnett's question that he just asked you, but in May, when was it, we talked about the grant being $167,000, I believe? And so now, we're at $299,095. So something happened there, and I guess my frustration a few weeks ago was just a few days before the meeting, was I, I learned from you that we were not going to have that contract for us to approve, because in May, we were going to have it. And so a lot of things changed from $167 to $299, and then us going to have the contract because of the reason you gave us, and now we don't approve the contract. So I, I kind of wonder what happened, basically, June, July, August, to get us to where we're at now, for the price, and who really came up with that, but, but really, they, they turned in their, and FAA's told them what needs to be done too, correct?
It, it goes both ways. The, the consultant completes the estimate, um, and completes the scope, and both of those are submitted to the FAA, as the FAA makes comments, revisions, adds things to these things. Um, and as I mentioned at the last meeting two weeks ago, uh, the reason for, for the increase, almost doubling the price, was due to, you know, 107 comments being received, not only from the public, but from law firms and environmental consultants and agencies out of state and in-state agencies concerning the scope of the EA. So there was a fairly major revision that the FAA had to consider, based on the 107 or 110 comments that were received when they advertised the, the scope of the budget.
If we wanted to, would you entertain us using somebody else?
As I mentioned a few minutes ago, I have worked with pretty much every company in the state that does this type of work. I can tell you that there's no one out there who is better than Michael Baker.
Okay.
I can tell you that I have, you know, the criticism that has come from us using Michael Baker because of my history there many, many years ago, I have really very close friends that work at other firms and are qualified to do this work, uh, that would love to have it, but they are not more qualified than Michael Baker to do it.
Okay, thank you. And let's move on to new business item number one. Discuss action to approve budget amendment for fiscal year 2014, Cap.
This is a routine annual item that we have before, in every budget that we process, we have things such as grants that are received throughout the year. We receive those grants, we spend those grants, and then we bring a consolidated budget back to you after those are completed. In this particular one, we have increased revenues of about $2 million, and we've decreased our expenses by about $50,000 from the original budget. And also, and this are the capital purchases, they're budgeted as one line item, and in the budget that you have, budget amendments, we move those to departments that have actually made those purchases.
And at the end, we didn't use any of that?
That's correct, we didn't use any of that. And over, we're in the process of closing out the year, and over the next couple of weeks, we'll put out a final report, once the audit's complete, um, to give you an exact number, but these budget amendments should take care of it.
Any other discussion? Thanks for your work, Kevin. Number two, discuss action to adopt Resolution 14-28, creating a covenant running with the land for the Pollin County War Veterans Monument, authorizing its conveyance and so to, to such covenant. Jason.
Commissioners, as y'all are aware, there is the Pollin County War Veterans Monument, which is presently located behind the Wind Building. Uh, it is located on, uh, what I'll call a traffic island back there. It is a monument that is currently owned by the county, and the monument has the names of those Pollin County residents who have been killed in action in World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan. This resolution creates a cup, what we call a covenant running with the land. The covenant restricts the use of this particular property. You often place this covenant as the owners of the property. It restricts the use of this property for preservation of the monument that currently exists, and it restricts use to honoring those service members who have been killed in action. The resolution places this covenant, and once it's in place, no subsequent owner of the property can use the property for any other purpose that is inconsistent with the covenant. This resolution, again, authorizes y'all to execute that covenant, place it on the property, and it also authorizes you to convey this property out to any interested party who is willing to own and maintain this property pursuant to the state laws regarding the conveyance of county property, but they have to do it with this covenant in place. If they violate the covenant, the property per the deed, per the covenant, will revert back ownership to the county.
Commander, uh, could I get you and Stephen Crew, if you wouldn't mind coming to the lecture?
He doesn't want to put people on the spot. He's never known to do that.
I've been working with these two gentlemen for approximately five years. There was a conveyance of property to, uh, Tennesaw College in Georgia Highlands. Uh, in the era, the whole area was transferred. We worked with the state to get back ownership of this section. And, uh, it was just resolved at the urging of the commander and of Stephen Crew, uh, who have an annual event, uh, every year to recognize our veterans. So, i- is this something that would satisfy the war veterans? And, uh, Stephen, is this, you're into monuments and you're into preservation of our history, would this satisfy what y'all are trying to accomplish?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, sure would.
And Stephen, you feel the?
Absolutely.
Uh, so, I wanted y'all to recognize it, because they, they took this on, and a lot of people take on duties and spend a lot of time at it, but they, they never let up until we made sure that we had this where it would be preserved forever. So, I thank you for your diligence, and I thank you for your honesty.
We back out.
So, keep coming forward. Thank you very much. Any other? Anything you and one of y'all would like to add?
Just like to say that the American Legion here, uh, put a lot of people in this community and, and, uh, over the years, has, uh, raised money to build the monument, and has had, actually, semi-services there, and, um, continue, will continue to do so. The Legion has, uh, approximately $100,000 invested in that. They've had to redo different things, lighting, lowering, various utilities over the years to preserve it, so that, that is the, uh, the group, ready as commander of the American Legion here, is to, is to secure that from perpetual, um, situation that could not be affected by, um, future legislative bodies. And we want to thank you for all of your diligence as a commission to, uh, put these things in motion to, to get it to an independent group, uh, so we can take care of it.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you. Number three, discuss action to enter into an intergovernmental contract between Pollin County and the Pollin County Airport Authority for the operation of the Silver Comet Field in Pollin Northwest Atlanta Airport.
On July 10th, the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Airport met, and they asked me to come speak to that group at that meeting. And as we went through the meeting, a lot of questions were asked about how the airport operates. That group was simply trying to get an understanding as to how the airport was set up and how it operated. And, uh, I think that meeting was probably about an hour and a half or so, and, and a large focus in that meeting was on the organizational structure. And, uh, questions were asked as to where, where are the lines, where are the lines of responsibility for the Board of Commissioners begin and end, and where are the lines of responsibilities for the Pollin County Airport Authority begin and end? And unfortunately, I couldn't give real straightforward answers to that. The fact is that the airport authority, which was established in 1972, has the, has the ability to, to own and operate and maintain and run the airport. The Board of Commissioners has the same ability. Going all the way back to 2004, when we started the planning for the airport, uh, these roles have been muddled, and at times, the airport authority has entered into contracts, and at times, the Board of Commissioners have entered into their contracts, um, up to the point where today, we have, uh, most of the land at the airport's owned by the airport authority, but yet, some of it's owned by the Board of Commissioners. So, uh, in that meeting on July 10th, a question was asked to me, should there be a writing and an agreement in place that defines those roles? And my answer to them was, yep, absolutely, there should be. And the next question was, why is there not one? And, uh, that question was difficult to answer as well. This probably should have been done in 2004, and most certainly should have been done in 2006, when we started construction of the airport. It absolutely needed to be done in 2008, when we opened the airport. Uh, again, it was desperately needed in 2010, when we opened the terminal, and today, it still needs to be done. So, this is one of those items that has been kicked down the road, and kicked down the road, and kicked down the road, uh, because it is a fairly difficult item to, to put your arms around. So, following the meeting on July 10th, I started working very diligently on putting the intergovernmental group together, on trying to iron out the details of who does what. And, uh, what you have before you is, is the summation of basically two months of the work. Um, I will say that a lot of things were taken into consideration, uh, things like, for example, um, the land issue that I mentioned out of the airport. Today, if someone were to walk out on the airport and trip and fall and, uh, and crack their noggin open, uh, we would probably have to get a surveyor to come out and survey the spot that they fell, uh, to, to determine for sure whether or not they fell on the Pollin County Board of Commissioners property, which is covered by your insurance, or whether they fell on the Pollin County Airport Authority property, which is covered by their insurance. So there are a lot of issues like that, which are, are very muddled, they need to be cleaned up, and we need to have a firm operating procedure moving forward with the airport. So that's what this agreement does. Uh, we looked at many, many, many other airports around the state and around the region. Uh, the Association of Airport Executives, which is the leading, uh, the leading agency for intellectual knowledge and airport management, recommends airport authorities, the operation of airports, because of the ability to pull together people with specialized knowledge and specific knowledge on how you maintain, operate, and run an airport. So that is a lot of what this does, is it does shift, uh, staff to the airport authority. Uh, many comments have been made over the last couple of years about the airport authority is a policy agency that is setting policy and direction and everything else for the airport, however, uh, they're, they're not financially responsible because they don't, they don't have the budget. So this also corrects that issue. It shifts the funding over to the airport, makes them operate not only within a specific budget, but makes them operate within a specific budget that is declining each year. So it provides a mechanism to ensure that the airport becomes more and more self-sustainable each year. So that is a very, a very brief introduction to the intergovernmental agreement. I know you all have it, you've all read it, and if you have questions, I'd be delighted to address them.
Any questions? Yeah, I've got some, um, I guess, I guess I need to go.
I ask you one more thing. The, uh, a lot of the things that you do require FAA approval.
Yes, those things.
Have you contacted them about, and if this particular intergovernmental agreement, and then if so, what, what was their reply?
I have submitted this to the Georgia Department of Transportation International Division, which is annuals aviation, and I've also submitted it to the FAA. Both agencies have reviewed it, uh, they both have given me their, their verbal feedback that they don't see any issues or concerns. Uh, they have also both given me their verbal feedback that this is a local issue, as to how we choose to manage and operate our airport.
So the FAA does not have to approve anything when it comes to transfer of land or anything like that? They don't afford this?
They do not, because of the fact that we're co-sponsors. Because the airport authority and the Board of Commissioners are co-sponsors, uh, co-sponsors of the airport, in the FAA's eyes, we're one and the same. So what we do between the Pollin County Board of Commissioners and the airport authority, it was irrelevant to the FAA.
Can I ask, on the intergovernmental agreement, who, who was the author of this?
Yes, sir, Jim Woodward.
He was the author of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he did this?
Yes, sir. Obviously, it's been reviewed by the airport authority's legal counsel, it's been reviewed by your legal counsel, it's also been reviewed by an outside independent law firm, Kerstein and Young, which specializes in aviation and agreements that concern airports. So it's been reviewed by multiple dependencies.
Probably wouldn't have answered for this, Blake, but just to draw attention to it, we have department heads sitting here behind the table, and they're all budgeted and staffed. If we were to staff, and I already made comment about the quality of individuals that sit on the board, and they're selected because of their credentials, if we were to build an airport department with all the credentials, uh, you know, Kerry Tenmore and the rest, an airport department with all the credentials, you know, Kerry Tedmore and the rest, what would it cost the county to pay those folks?
I don't know that I could put a dollar figure on it, but I can tell you that we can't afford it. Kerry Tedmore acts as our safety officer at the airport. As you said, is Lieutenant Colonel of the Air Force, he's a senior pilot with FedEx on the trip seven. Those folks aren't available, so really aren't available to come to work for an airport department. We just simply couldn't, we couldn't pay enough to get them, I don't think.
So who directed the author to do this?
I did.
You did?
Yes, sir.
Is our, when did, did you receive this?
I received an initial draft of this document, I believe it was August nineteenth, about two and a half, three weeks ago. At that time, I, it was my understanding that this was a concept for possible conveyance of authority. I know that at that time, in our budget hearing that we held in July, there was some discussion about drawing those lines, either bringing them together into one or separating one from another. I reviewed it on August nineteenth, made my initial concept, my initial comments to it, and at that time, I did not hear any further action on it until this passed me Wednesday, September.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon lunch. And just so you are aware, when I received the direction that had prepared this for the agenda beginning Wednesday, I had some concerns about some areas that were in the agreement, had a phone call from Commissioner Graham in regard to that, removed those items that were of concern to me in regard to what the county's interest is on this. Made those revisions Wednesday afternoon, continued those revisions Thursday morning. It was very important to me that the five of y'all, because of the nature of this agreement, had this IGA in front of you so that you could consider it for purposes of this meeting. I believe, to my knowledge from Ms. Meredith, that she made it available to y'all on Dropbox about 1:30 Thursday afternoon, I think we're supposed to be there.
So as of right now, our county employees we have out there, which is you and Jimmy, right?
Yes, sir.
So if this intergovernmental agreement passes, then y'all will not be county employees? Do I read that correct?
I will most certainly not be a county employee. Ms. Walton will have the option of looking for another position in another department or looking at the opportunity to go to the Airport Authority, that needs to be her decision, I'm glad.
Okay, okay. In other words, if you both stay there, you'll both be employed by the Airport Authority, nothing will run through according to the agreement, no?
Yes, sir.
What about benefits?
That would be handled through ACCG.
That's different now, right?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to, I've had that question. In addition to the contract payments, the county shall transfer by deed approximately 168 acres of property described on the attached Exhibit A that it owns at the airport to Pauling County Airport Authority. Is that 168 acres, or is it 163? Is there five acres that I'm not aware of?
I don't have any.
I thought it was 162. something, something, something. 162.835 acres, and I've always called it 163. But in the agreement, it says 168, so I didn't know if there was another parcel of land besides the flag, I call it the 163 acre flag lot.
There is not, that is the reason the survey was attached as an exhibit.
Okay, so really, that agreement needs to read, this agreement needs to read 162.835, right?
Yes, sir.
Instead of 168.
Yes, sir.
You and I spoke a little bit about the 163 acres. There's an issue that I've got with us transferring that. Months ago, I had even brought it up to council. You and I, about if that ever came up, that I wanted to discuss that.
Commissioner Ball, I'll be honest with you, you may have no recall specifically, it would not, wouldn't be outside of the ordinary course of business that you would have mentioned somewhere.
And it wouldn't be outside of that, that you and I, you one forgot about something.
Sure.
I mentioned it to you because that's an issue, 163 acres, that's the 163 acres that the City of Atlanta sold. I know that we received a letter from the City of Atlanta concerning that 163 acres. They've addressed a few things, I don't think we've heard anything else from them as far as since that letter. But that's the 163 that they sold that they claim, and there's been some other folks out there that claim that basically it was sold and maybe not a deed restriction, but some other things somewhere that said it would never be used for commercial.
I don't believe that's correct.
Well, I believe it was mentioned in the Kenny Rodger Room at the chamber back when that was done, and I think that was maybe '07, but I may have my facts, not exactly right. However, the 163 acres, I'm not in favor of us transferring that right now in this agreement or outside of this agreement. And I think that's something that we all need to look at, there's a couple reasons why. Number one, we own it, the Board of Commissioners, the citizens, it's in the Board of Commissioners' name. The contracts that were done with Propeller, they signed the lease for future use of about 60 acres, I believe.
Yes, sir.
At which I assume he can take down at any time that he chooses to take down, okay? One acre, two acres, 10, 20, whatever. I may be wrong, so I'm going to clarify that right now, that I could be, I could be wrong. But out of that 60 acres, I feel like that 15 or 20 acres actually is in this 163 acres is a part of it. Now, I haven't had a surveyor go out and survey anything, I've only done it the old-fashioned way. I've pulled the plats, I've done a layover of the plats, and there's a decent amount, and I'm just shooting from the hip, I'm going to say 15 to 20, 15 to 25 acres. When y'all entered into that agreement with Propeller, the Airport Authority did not have the authority or the right to enter in that agreement. In my view, in my view, as contract law, did not have the authority to enter into that agreement on that 168 acres. Maybe, or it's 163, excuse me, maybe your agreement would have been fine, except for the fact that the 60 acre agreement, which you have plotted out, because you sent that to me, right?
Yes, sir.
That 60 acres is in a contract, and in that 60 acres, some of it overlays in our 163 that we own. Now, I've never been able to sell anything that belonged to somebody else without their permission, and I wouldn't think we could lease anything. So that's a, that's a stickler for me, and it is one that I brought up when we were walking down the hall one day, and I just said, hey, if this ever comes up, we need to discuss this. We've always discussed things when it comes to land acquisition or moving property or anything else, we can do that in closed session, but we haven't discussed this issue right here. So...
Commissioner Ball, let me comment on that, Mr. Chairman. If there's acreage belonging to the county, that a, I mean, the county's in control of that, and that's really the end of the discussion, who has authority to lease property, the owner of the property has the authority to lease. I'll be glad to look at an issue regarding that acreage, to see whether or not there's an issue there, but I'd be glad to take that up and do that.
We need, we need to look at that, and like I said, I may be wrong, and I'm okay if I'm, if I'm wrong, and I'm wrong. But I feel like there's, there's a few acres there that you have leased out to Propeller that actually belongs to us. And I know that, I know that he hasn't taken that to do anything with it yet, but his lease has that as an exhibit, and you have a drawing of that property.
What we have is we have, we have a concept drawing, we don't have a, have a survey. So obviously, when the property is surveyed, when the lease is converted to an actual lease, and not just an option, but an actual lease, it will have to be surveyed. And as your legal counsel has said, we can't lease something that you own, so that certainly will not be a part of any lease.
Well, if this intergovernmental agreement passes, it's not going to matter anyway.
Correct.
But if you take the lines that were drawn, it's not like you just put a big box out there and threw it out there. You've got lines that were deliberately drawn a certain way because it's a very unusual description of plat, somewhat a drawing, okay? And it may have been the most usable, best used land he could use, it may have been what he chose, I'm not sure I wasn't a part of the process.
All it did was hold the property line and the building setback line was all the things, so there was not a lot of snakes.
Looked like there was something intentionally, however, I know that getting on the 163 acres wasn't intentionally or not, okay? And so I'm not pointing fingers at that, but I think that's something that we need to look at, and we need to look at that before this is voted on. Because if that was done...
If it was done, it's irrelevant because it's not contractually binding.
Because he only has an option.
Correct.
But he doesn't actually, Propeller doesn't actually have a lease, they have an option to lease.
Correct.
His property has specified rights.
Yes, and again, we can't lease something we own, so we...
So if, if what he picked for the first project was the county's line, as it stands now, the county would have to agree to that one?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And actually, is, is transferring the 163 acres viable to, in your opinion, to this governmental agreement, intergovernmental agreement?
It's not viable at all, actually, but what it does is it cleans up, as I mentioned earlier, a bit of a mess. I don't know for sure, I have not looked at your insurance policy, but your insurance policy, I don't believe, is specifically written to cover the operation of the airport. Ours is. So you have property that's being used in that function that I don't think your insurance necessarily addresses. Ours most certainly does, and it would be more appropriate, in my opinion, to have all of that insured the same. As you're well aware, if there were to be an accident to the airport, God forbid, it's probably not going to be on a specific spot, it's going to be spread out a little bit. So a legal issue of having two different insurance policies covering literally the runway at the airport is a big concern to me. I think it needs to be dealt with.
That 163 acre goes across the east end of the runway.
It does, yes, sir.
All the way.
Yes, sir.
Talks about the, the money that we're going to give, and I know it starts off at $400,000, it goes down to 175 in the 10th year. Actually, if you figure it out, with our budget raising it from 300 or 303, whatever it was, up to 400,000, it actually works out for the first nine years to be an average of 300,000 a year, which is the same thing that we've had. If you include the 10th year, we're 285,000 and change a year for 10 years average, which is probably about what our average has been in the last five years, right? So we're still going to be funding that.
I don't know, yes, sir.
Right?
May I make a comment?
But we're not going to have any say-so out there.
That's correct. The operation of the airport is done by the Airport Authority. If there are budget concerns and budget overages, it will be the Airport Authority's issue. I think everyone on this board understands that the cost of operating the airport is going to go up. We are going to have to add additional staff at some point in time. We are going to have additional maintenance costs. The airport is about six years old, as it ages, there will be maintenance concerns that we'll have to take care of. So your cost is, depending on however you'd like to look at it, if you want to look at it from the last couple of years rate, it's health stagnant. However, there is a guarantee that it's going to be health stagnant, so you are removing any liability from the increased cost that will obviously come over the next two years.
And the reality is, the $400,000 is actually less than we spent last year.
So let me ask you this, we talked about the EEA, we go forward, everybody says it's going to be more lawsuits. More lawsuits come, they come towards, you know, to the Airport Authority, basically, because that's what we've got going now, right?
Yes, sir.
Right now, we're funding those. We are. So what's going to happen next year when more lawsuits come?
Well, a couple of things that you have to understand, I think first and foremost is that the lawsuit against the EEA will once again be filed against the FAA, it won't be filed against us. We're not the creating agency for the FAA, so again, that will be filed against the FAA. So that is, of course, one of the big reasons that the FAA is so heavily involved in this process and has spent so much time going over that scope and those hours for the EEA. So that issue will not be necessarily an issue for us to deal with, if any issue for the FAA, I believe.
But it also, in the last suit, the Airport Authority chose to be enjoined in the suit.
It did.
And hired, turned me out of Washington D.C. to represent the SCOTUS, that's $65,000.
Yes, sir.
If the IGA is passed, that, the Airport Authority could still choose to do that, but they would have to budget and recognize that, hey, we got the money to pay for that.
Exactly, so the Airport Authority will have to make a decision at that point in time as to whether or not they need representation and whether or not they can afford representation.
So, so if the lawsuits come, they go to the FAA, but they come against you two, you decide y'all aren't going to come back to us and ask for it?
Well, they won't go against us too, that's not an option.
And then I'm talking about, I apologize, let me replay it, lawsuits come towards the FAA, lawsuits come towards you for something else, we don't know what that may be. But if that happens, right now, it's set up to where we're writing those checks, is that going to be the case? I'm asking...
No, you will not be writing a check to them.
That question, we're not going to be responsible, if we pass this intergovernmental agreement, we're not going to be responsible for any more check rights.
That is absolutely correct.
Other than what's in this agreement.
Yes, sir.
And some of that's going to happen, I guess, the initial one is going to happen...
October, yes.
This year, and then the half of it, and then the second half is going to be January 1, January 1st of 2015.
But it will be, October 1st will be half a year less what the airport department has already spent.
Yes, sir.
So in other words, if they, if they spend $100,000, you get half the 400, it would be 200, so you get 100.
Yes, sir.
Whatever was spent up to this point.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm looking for the part, and I apologize for taking so long, but this is the only time we sit down and talk about these things. So looking for the part where it talks about us providing the services of...
Yeah, we're required, according to the agreement, I'll just say this, is we're required to provide fire service, okay? And we are required to provide security for the airport, which is under the, what, TSA? Well, I mean, it's part of all of that, in fact, currently, Captain LaHoma has actually written a security plan for TSA's approval to do that, and there was an item in our budget that actually funded a personnel, so, and you're going to, we're going to be required, the county in the future is going to be required to provide that personnel. Which, those are the only two that we are required to provide, which is fire and...
Yes, sir.
Not checking in that plane with the security of the airport.
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to be required to, and it was cut off of what I was using here, so I needed to pull it back up on my pad, but we're going to, we're going to be required for the security of the airport. What about the security of, if your passenger plane's flying out, what about that security? Because doesn't the contract with Propeller say that we're going to pay that? Or am I wrong by that?
You lost me there one more time.
The security of the airport, are we just providing security with the marshals for today, the way we're doing it, or is that security that we're going to provide going to grow? Are we going to be required for more security when it comes to... Are we gonna be required for more security when it comes to, uh, if there's passengers or anything else going on out there? Are we gonna be required to do whatever else that needs to be done? Are we required to do all that?
Yes.
With this...
Not, not the checking in and out of passengers, but, but according to the, the, uh...
The only thing you have to provide is you have to provide a law enforcement officer...
Right.
Uh, at the airport when commercial operations are taken place.
During that time?
Yes, that's it.
But not, nothing to do with passengers?
No, you do not have anything to do with passengers, that's all handled by T S A.
By T S A, who's gonna play T S A?
Uh, T S A has grants in place to pay them, and if there's a supplemental cost, then Propeller will board there and that.
Okay, and we're gonna provide, um... We're still gonna provide the fire station?
Yes.
We're gonna provide the fire station to the airport authority for a commercial airport with Slos dollars?
You, you have a planned fire station in that area?
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm trying to grasp it, I need to, Mike, can you help me, or? I know what we planned.
We're gonna have a fire station that's located at the airport that will respond to incidents should there be any at an airport. We're not building a fire station for the airport. But there, there's certain things within that, that, for instance, we own a crash truck.
Certainly.
That was bought by...
No question.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we're not, we're not doing that operation just for the fire port, airport. But it is there and it will service that, but it will also service other areas.
No question, right?
No question, and if we had ten-story buildings, we'd build a fire station that had a ladder truck. I mean, if, we want to equip the fire station with what it needs to accomplish its task, it is, it will co-locate it at the airport and, and will be equipped to respond to an airport-related incident, but that is not its only function, in fact, the, the function it never uses.
Exactly, we all hope that, but I guess what I'm saying is when we, when we voted on that, and that was a long time ago, uh, when we voted on that and then all the lawsuits came, so right now, we're holding off on the fire station, um...
We're not holding off, we're not allowed to build it.
Right, we got, we gotta hold off because we're not allowed to build it because of the lawsuits. Um, I voted not knowing that the airport was gonna be commercial. So my point is this, at first, what we were looking at was gonna have a fire station at the top of the hill that would be there at the airport, but if we were doing it for the citizens, because we didn't have to have a fire station for general aviation, am I correct with that?
That's correct.
Okay, cause we haven't had one so far. So now, it's a little bit different, I guess the way we look at it is, if that firehouse is there for commercial, we were basically gonna run, if I'm not mistaken, two crews out there, because it's, no, it's not gonna be able to, if we have commercial, there's gonna have to be a commercial crew that's there, when the second crew goes off to a residential something, which is gonna be more likely to happen than something at the airport. Right? To kind of have like, have a two...
I, I understand where you're trying to push this, but the deal is this, I am tasked with providing fire protection for the citizens of Pauling County. If this Board of Commissioners wants to build something that requires me to have attention to detail at a specific firehouse to combat that issue, that's what we're gonna have.
Right.
If y'all wanna build ten-story buildings, I'm gonna go buy ladder trucks. I mean, it's, so, the, the condition that exists today at the airport will be met with that particular fire station. If there is no commercial fire service or no commercial airport in Pauling County, then the airport will be staffed appropriately. If you start flying commercial airliners out of there, I'm gonna staff it accordingly.
Right, I agree, I agree.
But that fire station was intended to serve the citizens west of Dallas. There was a gap in the coverage, that fire station lands in the center of that gap.
Right.
The fact that there happens to be an airport there is irrelevant, we looked at about eight different locations for the fire station. It made more sense to co-locate it there because there was an offsetting demand.
I, and, and I'm not trying to be argumentative at all, and I'm going with your lead, you're the county administrator, and I'm, you know, like, you're the airport director. Um, it's a different game when we're looking at building that fire station out at the airport for commercial, and I just wanted to make sure, am I correct that we're gonna do it with Slos dollars, or can, can we still do that?
Unless you want to use general fund dollars, I mean, that, that, it's set up to build brick and mortar buildings and buy equipment with Slos dollars for the sole purpose of providing fire protection for the citizens of Pauling County. I mean, there, there's no other reason not to use those dollars.
I'm, I'm just making sure that we...
You're, you're, you're clear, you're clear.
Is that the conclusion? That's the conclusion of our regular business session, there is no executive session, uh, public participation on non-agenda items. Uh, and I apologize if y'all have a little bit of a different timeframe, but we have Travis Boatright, professional firefighters of Pauling County, and I assume y'all are coming together, Jim Dolls, international firefighters of Georgia. Thank you all for being here, and let's give them a hand.
Well, I'm gonna start out with giving one...
Good afternoon!
Uh, I'd like to start out by saying thank you to elected officials, uh, for your service to Pauling County. Uh, also, I want to take this time to congratulate Chief Herewood on his retirement. Um, I've worked with Chief Herewood as a volunteer and a paid firefighter for, well, ever since he started in early nineties. So, uh, he's, he's been there and we've come a long way. But, uh, most of you on the board, uh, know me, uh, the ones who don't, my name's, uh, my help, my name is Travis Boatright. Uh, I'm here to introduce the professional firefighters of Pauling, uh, Local Five Zero Zero Eight. Uh, we are a local charter of the International Association of Firefighters. Um, you'll also hear me refer to that as I F F. Um, I would like to recognize my executive officers, um, myself as president, Jerry Ledner is vice president, and Secretary of Treasury, Tim Keen. Um, and then Mr. Jim Dolls, uh, is our, uh, president of the Professional Firefighters of Georgia. It is our mission to have a good working relationship with fire administration, the Pauling Board of Commissioners, and the Fire Tax Advisory Board to provide tools, resources, and research to accomplish the same goals. We bring numerous benefits to the department, including G I S studies, I F F delivered training, public relations programs to include, uh, let me take you here, hashtag justify it, uh, which is a no texting and driving campaign for teenagers. Uh, and I F F M D A built boot patrol. Also staffing and pay studies, I F F grant writing assistance to include, but not limited to, safer grants, FEMA turn-down rejection notices, fire grants. Also health, wellness, and fitness programs. The I F F Financial Division for member benefits for loans, programs for, excuse me, loan programs for home, auto, and college, insurance and retiree insurance programs. In return for being a partner in progress, we insist on our firefighters constitutionally protected civil rights to association and to represent our members' professional interest like any other profession. We are a mission-driven association and look forward to partnering with the fire administration elected officials and the Fire Tax Advisory Board to provide fire protection and emergency services in the safest, most efficient manner while treating firefighters in a fair and equitable manner. And thank you for your time, I know it's been a long day, so, uh, turn it over to Mr. Jim Dolls here.
Thank you, Travis. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for, uh, having me here today on this most interesting day at Pauling County Commission. Also, I want to congratulate the chief for bringing the department in such a, a great distance in such a short time, uh, with rap, uh, the rapid growth here in, in Pauling County. The job he has done is truly commendable. Also, I want to thank the, uh, uh, county attorney for those, uh, those remarks during his invocation, those were much appreciated, and thank you for that. So Travis asked me here today to provide a little background and history on the International Association of Firefighters. Uh, you've each got a, a copy of the PowerPoint I presented. Uh, we've got three hundred thousand members in the United States and Canada. Uh, and our mission is to protect and advance the interest of career firefighters employed by the cities and counties, uh, in those two countries. We've got thirty-two hundred affiliates, and we represent about eighty-five percent of all the career firefighters and fire-based paramedics, uh, in those two countries. In Georgia, we've got twenty-four affiliates, and you'll see those listed, they include Athens, Clark County, Cherokee County, DeKalb County, Quinette, Marietta. We've represented many departments who are going through the same sorts of growing pains of Pauling County, and we truly have been a part of, a partner in progress in assisting those departments and those governing bodies in, uh, providing, uh, top-notch fire protection in the most, uh, safe and efficient manner. Um, a little bit about the history, uh, we were established in nineteen eighteen, so we're coming up on our one-hundredth anniversary. We're based in Washington, D.C. When we were established, uh, pay was low in the, uh, fire service. Uh, hours were long, firefighters basically lived at the firehouse and, uh, the company officer would give them a few hours of leave to go home and see their families, you know, when conditions warranted. There were no safety standards, uh, no retirement benefits, and you got too old to do the job, you were pretty much destitute and relying on your, your family to help you to do that job. But I F F became, uh, the number-one abysque group for professional firefighters, uh, and we remain so today. Uh, we're, we're responsible for many, if not most, of the accomplishments that have taken place both professionally and in the delivery of fire service uh, in, in the history of this country. Uh, those include NFPA standard fifteen hundred, which covers occupational safety and health standards. NFPA seventeen-ten, which I'm sure y'all are familiar with, which covers, uh, staffing, operations, and response standards to deliver, uh, fire protection in the, uh, most efficient manner. Uh, we, uh, we wrote legislation that conducts an I O S, National Institute of, uh, Safety and Health, uh, investigations for firefighter fatalities to try to prevent those from happening again in the future. I've, I've actually assisted with four of those, uh, those investigations. And we were driving, of course, behind the Public Safety Officers Benefit Program, which is a federal benefit of three hundred thousand dollars for the families and spouses of firefighters who are killed in the line of duty to provide for them and to educate the children of people who have given their, their, their lives in this service. We also operate health, safety, and wellness programs which can be very beneficial to the, uh, governing body in reducing, uh, line of duty disability and workers' cost payments by making sure that firefighters on the front line are physically capable of doing the job and that they're not, uh, subject to catastrophic heart attacks or strokes, um, on the job. Um, we've improved turnout gear, S C B As, and just a, a myriad of other things that we don't have time to go into today. But the reason we really exist, uh, is for the career advancement of professional firefighters. Uh, our local affiliates operate at municipal level to try to, uh, advocate for the fair, market-based compensation. And when I say that, uh, what I mean to say is, uh, what we try to do is make sure that firefighters receive a firefighter's wage for doing a firefighter's job, and we can provide you with a lot of information on what constable, uh, cities and departments are paying their firefighters. Um, we advocate for quality, low-cost benefits and secure and affordable retirements and fair and equitable working conditions to include, uh, promotional processes and due process disciplinary measures. We're a direct democracy, we're governed by our members, uh, they vote on all of our officers and all of our, our, our positions. And, um, I should say here that though we are a labor union, it's specifically prohibited in our constitution by laws to ever engage in any sort of work action. I F F in its history has never authorized or participated in any sort of strike or work stoppage, and we never will. Um, but what we really strive to do is be a voice for our members, and, uh, when this, when you are making decisions, uh, what we would like, uh, the opportunity to do is to provide you with the information you need to make, uh, informed decisions on behalf of our members. And, uh, and that is the number-one reason we exist. Here, uh, Travis mentioned some of the services that we can provide to, uh, the departments and, uh, to the governing body, and those include free, uh, federal grant-based training programs that can save, uh, this county hundreds of thousands of dollars for hazmat training, weapons mass destruction, active shooter, health and safety. Um, we can really bring a, a huge benefit. We can provide pay studies, and I will wrap this up, uh, in ten seconds. We can provide pay studies, municipal analysis, G I S studies, training for affiliates, health and safety resources, and, uh, and grant writing assistance that can, uh, be a huge benefit to the taxpayers of Pauling County. And thank you again, uh, for hearing me out, and, uh, look forward to working with you.
Jim, thank you, and I, I noticed we have some, uh, members that are not, uh, on your list from the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. That's fifteen counties and forty-nine cities. I chair that, so I invite you to come be a part of our agenda, uh, go over this and see if we can, uh, pick up some, uh, more members from that. And, uh, we would be glad to have you on Channel Twenty-Three to discuss how we can better work together in the future of firefighters. But, uh, I'm excited to have you, I want to ask you one historical question. Was Jim Dolls the one that warned everybody, uh, the British were coming?
He spelled his name with an E, and I don't, but he, we are descendants of William Dolls, uh, who had the misfortune of not having a, uh, name that rhymed with, listen, my children, and you shall hear.
Thank you, I, I thought maybe there was some relation there, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you.
We have one more person wishing to speak, Martina Hemminger.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I'm here today to talk about citizen oversight. Um, now I felt that with all the recent legal issues in all the various counties in the metro area regarding the B O Cs, um, that our B O C, many of whom rely on platforms of transparency, would strive for citizen oversight and to help them, uh, so that we can help you understand the responsibility to the taxpayers. After all, the taxpayers are the ones who are paying the bills. Now, not valuing citizen oversight in your decision-making is very likely the major cause for the dysfunction we often see week after week in our county government. While the citizens ask for oversight, we are ignored by you week after week. Now, do you see a correlation there? We see it, economic development experts see it, and private businesses see it. Now, there is still no citizens oversight board for the I V A and the airport authority. Now, I offered to help you and Mr. Jones formed oversight boards back in March, but you ignored me and instead opted for steering committees, which you most likely thought would assist you in circumventing the taxpayers and the F A A via this various state legislation. Now fortunately, the P C A A steering committee is approaching their task responsibly, and they're discussing disbanding the airport authority. So now, they're being undermined because with these new jerk contracts. I feel for the P C A A steering committee because they get their direction from a chairman who acts pretty much like a startled squirrel with a mouthful of nuts, running back and forth across the highway with no indication...
Martina, I'm not here to hear your...
Of which way you will run.
Martina, I'm not here to take personal... So please, conduct yourself appropriately.
Okay, and all he can focus on is keeping those nuts from his mouth. Without citizen oversight, there is a county government bubble where the taxpayers' rights are trampled. Let me give you an idea of what sage advice is out here for you outside of your bubble. The F A A actually publishes manuals about community involvement. The FAA actually publishes manuals about community involvement. Quote, "The FAA regards community involvement as an essential element in the development of programs and decisions that affect the public. The public has a right to know about airport projects and to participate in the decision-making process." Now, I'm pretty sure you've seen 49 U.S. Code, subsection 47, 106, because of your intent today to hand over taxpayer property to the airport authority to, again, avoid citizen oversight. However, here is what you ignored out of that code. It is required that the airport management board has voting representation from the communities in which the project is located. Where is our voting representation? Currently, we only have a semblance of representation through the VOC. Surely, a citizen oversight committee could have pointed this fact out to you. Now, let me give you some examples of how schizophrenic this county looks from outside of the bubble. You have the head of the airport authority publicly swearing that there will be no airliners here. Believe you me, if there was gonna be airliners, I would not be a part of this. Never, ever would I be a part of this. And then he takes part in secret negotiations to commercialize the airport. The airport director approves to put me on the airport authority agenda to speak for five minutes on the topic of due diligence. And then he sends out a midnight email to the airport authority calling me names because I'm scheduled to speak about due diligence. And Mr. Austin, I'm pretty sure you responded to that email by telling Mr. Squamford, "Good job." Now, the public recently elected new commissioners who will take office in January and who promised to support citizen oversight in the county. So Mr. Austin is now introducing these new contracts, all of the outs which undermine those commissioners and their promises to the public. This Board of Commissioners wants to hand over everything of ours to this airport authority that has proved over and over again to be incompetent, hostile, and deceitful to the taxpayers. If things go dysfunction as usual in the Pauling County government bubble in voting this afternoon, I can tell you how it will go. David A. introduces what he wants and disregards everyone else. David B. will motion to approve whatever David A. wants. David C. will second whatever David A. wants. That's David Austin, three votes, like a ventriloquist actor. Mr. Graham will sit on the fence, and Mr. Powell will again be the lone commissioner who is up there to protect the public. Now, if you want to stop the dysfunction, you will trash these latest proposed contracts and work with the public to form citizen oversight over these out-of-control authorities. Mr. Austin, what are you afraid of?
Thank you for your time.
I heard it's a new session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion for adjournment. Second?
Motion second, call favor, say aye.